Okay, it is Wednesday, November 26, 2025. We call the need to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any minutes from reports received?
We do not. Next page.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports. Upcoming meetings and events.
Well, we've got Thanksgiving tomorrow. Happy Thanksgiving. A little early, everybody. And then there's a pretty important game on at 3:30 tomorrow. So about three hours after that, don't, don't, don't call me because I probably won't be in a good mood.
Chefs.
Yeah, chefs, whatever they're called. Anyway, and then Monday, the Festival of Lights and Christmas Trees at Taos Countryside Park opens up. And it goes from the first through the 14th. It's the trees and lights for visualizing after dark. And then on December 12th, they'll have the visit with Santa also out there. So we got a pretty neat little setup. Go check it out.
That's a nice park. It really is a nice park.
They do a great job.
Yeah.
That's really about all I got.
I have no meetings on my calendar for Thursday, Friday, or Monday. And the only event that I had noted was something about a football game.
Yeah. I'm gonna have my crying talp with me.
Well, I have Monday night, CAP Region Board of Governors Social is down in Millbank. So that's all I've got. And a Commission Comments. Bids and contracts. Approval and signing of change order one and amended ER for EMS headquarters.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is related to the Safe Haven baby box. As we've.
I can play you on that.
As we discussed previously, we've agreed to front the cost of construction for the installation of the Safe Haven baby box and then seek reimbursement from the state through House Bill 121. In order to do so, we needed a change order for the scope of the building to install the box. And since the project was funded by CDBG money, they did need to amend the environmental report. So we worked with the RPC to accomplish that. So we have the amendment to the ER which has been reviewed and approved by DED, which needs a signature. And then I also have the change order for the construction in and of itself. And this would take away all of the administrative processes and allow GBH to move forward on their timeframe. So happy to answer any questions?
Good. All right, I'll make a motion to approve and sign the change order one and the amended environmental review record for EMS headquarters.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Approval and signing of an MOU with the Missouri National Guard Seventh Civil Support Team.
Yeah, so we were approached a couple of months ago by the Seventh Civil Support Team. They have two medical officers assigned to them and they function to support the team and their medical needs. However, they don't get a lot of real world experience outside of dealing with, you know, the everyday bumps and bruises of the team. So they requested to have some ride time with us and be able to perform some clinical interventions in doing so. So we developed an MOU, Jill has reviewed it, and we just ask that you sign this today. There is no cost associated.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the MOU with the Missouri National Guard Seventh Civil Support Team.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Approval and signing of the DEVNET post.
So we have, with our additional hires that we've made at the assessor's office, we've exceeded our number of approved users. So basically, this is just adding two users so that we can, so everyone can, can have access to the DEVNET software.
I'll make a motion to sign and approve the DEVNET engagement to increase the number of users on the service by two at a cost of $200.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of change order number two, 2025 Asphalt Overlay Program.
So this is for the final closeout documents for the 2025 Asphalt Overlay Program. And the change, this change order reflects actual quantities needed to complete the project. Differences between tabulated and actual quantities exist due to irregularities in surface width, surface length of the road.
Is it shorter than we expected?
Couple areas where it was a little bit wider.
Lighter. Measure's kind of bad in all we got.
We're gonna give a new tape measure in the budget for next year. It only goes to tenths of feet instead of sixteenths of an inch.
Is that what you were looking at, the metric side?
We don't do anything like that.
I'll make a motion to sign and approve the change order number two, the final closeout for the 2025 Asphalt Overlay Program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thanks, man. We'll see who's laughing come tomorrow. This is a new one. Yep, Mr. Michael.
Signing of IDI core contract.
Oh, it's me. Sorry.
That's you. That's the one that wasn't on my agenda.
Yeah. So this is an investigative tool that we use. We have one with another company. This one's supposed to be a little bit cheaper and maybe a little more efficient. We're gonna sign this and it actually gives us a 30-day, it's 30 days free and then we'll go into pain. So it's no, there's no adjustment to the, to the budget whatsoever. Jill has looked at it and said it was fine. Brian said it was a great idea, so.
What happens if you sit there and mind your own business?
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the IDI core contract for the Sheriff's Department.
Second.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Idea.
Thank you.
Okay. We will go into new business. Council's payable review.
I'd ask for approval of council's payable pending your review.
Motion to approve council's payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion and approval of the workman's comp renewal for 2026 year.
I would ask to renew with MEM for the year 2026. It's the first renewal of the five-year bid that we did last year. There is a substantial increase. However, we knew ahead of time that there was going to be a substantial increase because of our PNIC rating with our mod went up and definitely because of usage and severity of claims. So again, I would just ask for renewal with MEM for the next year. The departments will not see basically an increase in their budget for '26 because I'm billing for '25 for their '26. I have to wait until the audit's done. So you'll see this hit each individual budget. So if the year advanced notice, that it will hit the other department's budget in '27, the '26 premium, if that makes sense.
There's that much of a lag because of the audit that is done in September.
February, yeah.
Oh, February.
For the year before.
Okay. We, I mean, we, we looked hard at whether or not to renew with MEM and considered others.
Yes. Very much our agent went out and got bids from two other vendors, so, or tried.
I think at one time you were actually looking at doing it with somebody else too and then it came back better or.
Right, the agent wasn't done with his negotiations, so.
But much of the increase is due to our experience, which was not good.
Right. Absolutely.
Very good.
And to some departments, to all departments, I think MEM will take a more of an active role next year too. They're very big companies. They're risk management, they don't minx. I don't know if anybody, if they's been out to other departments. They'll be coming out more next year.
We, I mean, we, we knew this, we knew, we expected bad news and it was even worse than we expected with respect to our experience, which results in larger, larger premiums.
Absolutely.
And the full effect really won't hit us until '27, but it is painful.
It is.
Do you have something there?
We've just got to transfer.
Transfer, and if you vote to award it to them for '26, that's really all I need.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to renew the first renewal with Missouri Employers Mutual.
Second.
Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Errors and omissions.
Good morning. How do you want to do? Good morning. So I have two errors and omissions. The first one I'll discuss is 5917, the Lisa tear. And we had a error on commission for the residential building value. Initial value was 386,700 and we want to revisit the 343,294,000. And that was on that particular property. And the second one is for 8119 Campbell Road. And this was due to, it's concerning the agricultural land and agricultural buildings. When this piece of property was split, we erred in not moving the, some of the agricultural buildings to the other property and also the portion of the ag to the other property. That's where the error comes from. The agricultural land is 25,900 and the correct amount is 690 for this parcel. And agricultural building is 6,300 and the correct value is 3,720.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept those. Let me just have, be having to, I'll make a motion to accept the request by the assessor's office for the two properties previously mentioned under the errors and omissions feature of assessor's office.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Go Cowboys. Go Cowboys. All two of us in here rooting for the assessor.
Okay. Purchase of mechanic tool sets for Public Works.
So this is an advanced purchase of the tool set for the third of our mechanics outfitting them with a full set of tools. Prior to this, we've given our mechanics a stipend and to bring their own tools in and buy tools. We decided a year ago for, so in the 2025 budget, that we would start a two-year process to outfit all our mechanics with a county-owned tool set. Just works better, doesn't require them to bring their, their own stuff in, and we just felt like that was the better path to go forward. And so last year, or actually in this year's budget, but last year, we included in the 2025 budget funding for two sets to do two of the mechanics and then this is just the third. And it's an advanced purchase with Snap-on Industrial, $32,432.17. And if we get it in now rather than wait till the first of the year, we can avoid a price increase of two and a half to five percent. So recommend approval of this. Talk to the auditor and he will board with, go and board with this right now.
As long as the auditor says it's okay. He's kind of like Eric, like.
Right. Just as a curiosity, Eric, the price tag for a set is?
That's one set. That's tools, that's toolboxes, two different toolboxes. We have to have larger stuff for bigger trucks, so it's a little more elaborate than what you might see in just a regular automotive shop. There's some additional things that go with this. This is just the straight tools from Snap-on.
We just can't run over to Westlake's and Harbor Freight and pack up the tools we need. This is.
They have a warranty, that's one thing for sure, and that, that's big in what we're doing.
I mean, I saw sticker shock, but it's amazing what the cost is to set up a mechanic with that needed equipment. So I don't have a problem with it. I mean, it's just shockingly expensive, but that's what it is.
It's the cost of doing business and, and I know you've, you've seen our shop and it's the stuff they work on, the magnitude, the size, and just the complexity of it requires something like this, so.
And the auditor will be around next year to, to do the inventory, to see that it's still there, right auditor?
We audit the box itself.
Okay.
And it has, it will have an inventory tag on it. We do not audit every little ratchet and wrench and everything.
Really?
Each piece has an engraved number on it and so that mechanic is responsible for their number, so.
Well, they were using their own tools, but a lot of these tools they don't have either, so, and there's stuff that you do need to do these projects, so I wouldn't expect them to buy that tool for a one-time thing either, so. Yeah, good. I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the mechanic tool set for Public Works from Snap-on per the quote submitted.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need a signature or you just need to vote?
Just sign the sheet on the back or something.
You didn't put a little sticky note on there for Sam, so we.
There wasn't a signature line, so it's one of those.
He still likes the.
I know.
I know.
Tom, take care of it.
Okay. Discussion of HVAC replacement at the Sheriff's Department.
There's actually two of them on there.
The United Mechanical.
Oh, yeah. Approval and signing of United Mechanical Service Quote.
Per our meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Helscher, we got a bid from United Mechanical to do the front-end unit. Brian's already got a computer set up and ready to go. We'd just like approval to go ahead and get this purchased for 9846. Keep going on this project to keep Sheriff Miller happy and so he doesn't take me, so. Next question on the agenda. I know, Mr., yeah, we talked about doing four units with, before we put this out for bid, I want to make sure we, everybody agrees, doing four of the rooftop units. We also had talked about purchasing all the rooftop units and then the ones we don't put up store somewhere. And then we talked about purchasing all and just doing them all at once. How would you like me and Jessica to go about bidding this? Do you want to just purchase them all at once?
Let's go back to the, the, the front-end piece of it. So I'll get that taken care of. So I didn't write my notes in there. Saw it on the agenda and then we're making, talking so much about the unit replacement. I might have to go get that. But on the front end of it, it was 9,800 or something.
9846.
So that part we can do under, is a state contract?
We've got a contract.
We have a contract.
That's with them, okay. So we can get this part moving and go ahead and this will help our existing system and we'll work with our existing system.
Correct.
And then we have to have it to go and fix the other stuff later on. So we just felt like we needed to probably go ahead and get this part done. If there's anything else, I'm forgetting. I think that was the main thing is that it's going to work with the new stuff coming in and actually make it better for what we have existing.
Correct.
So we were gonna go ahead and move with that.
Is there a timeframe? For which?
For the front end.
He could have it here in three weeks from Honeywell.
Eric, will there be any downtime on the system?
No, what he'll do is copy out what we got and then just create a template for the Honeywell system.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and sign the United Mechanical Services Quote for the, what do we call them, just the, the front-end HVA system? Oh, yeah. Cole County Jail BAS front-end change out.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now discussion of HVAC replacement, Sheriff's Department.
Okay. I'm just trying to keep them, how would you like us, just one bid, two bids, three bids? I mean.
Can you do the bid for four and then do the bid for all?
Yes.
I don't know if we can solve this in five-minute discussion. I, there's a bunch of different options, always to do it. It'll be fun either.
Commutes.
We talked about a base bid and then alternate bids. But there's a whole bunch of different ways that we could phase those out and.
We haven't approved anything in the budget yet either, so do we want to put this out to bid now? Did we, make what you proposed?
Two million. I, I proposed two million. I've heard anywhere from 1.2 million to 2.6 million, there's been the discussion of doing it in phases or all at one time. I put two million in there. There's some money left, but it, it really becomes priority with all the other capital improvements we have, in my opinion. This is probably number one on our list of capital improvements. And then after that, I, I think everything truly is up for discussion, but I don't have a recommendation at this time as to whether we do it all in one piece or we do it in phases because we haven't seen bids really of, of what the difference would be.
When the architect did it, he roughly guessed 2.2, but we also guessed high. It could come in 1.6. We don't know until we get a bid out.
Do we ever find out how much weight we can put on the top of that building? Because if we buy all the units, we have them sitting there. That way, when we have one that fails, we just cannot get the parts. It has to be replaced. It comes to that point. Because I'm not necessarily for just taking them down and getting rid of them if they still work, so.
As far as over the pods, there are spaces for the additional area that we sent those, but as far as the big, big boys, like the one that's on it, there's probably not enough room up there to set another unit as far as weight wise.
I know at our earlier conversations talked about, okay, they've kind of got a expected lifetime, but some are going to go longer, some are going to go shorter. But to be prepared, to have all the units purchased, you can have them all here, that way when it does go down, then we can replace them. The other good thing about that is if one of them makes it another year or two or even five, we're not having to replace them all at the same time again in another 12 or 15 years. So we had a lot of good conversation about it, I thought. We had a bunch of ideas. I don't know if we need to have a standalone meeting and just kick it around until we come up with something.
Commissioners, one of my. Without forbid, I, I remember, what, about five years ago when everything went down on a Sunday and, you know, heaven help us if they go down and all of a sudden we've got to take 180 inmates and, and find someplace to put them. It's going to be a hell of a lot more. So I, I don't want to just keep having discussions. I want them to keep moving ahead. I'm, I agree. To me, this is our number one priority is the jail.
Commissioners, I would just request in the bidding and deciding which way we go that we take into consideration if five years down the road, we decide to build out the jail, that it's engineered and that would be taken in consideration that those units would not have to be moved, you know, just because of us building out.
No.
The rest of the jail and.
The build-out goes, there's already spots on the blueprints for the new units. Nothing will have to be moved as far as the original units that are up there now.
Your pin dropped.
I kind of said where I was at with it. I know you was proposing doing like four of them, I guess the jail pods first or something, and I just.
Yeah.
If we can get a little more out of it, I'm willing to try to do it, but also don't want to put us in a bad position, so if we can go bid the units and have them there.
Right now, the worst ones up are, are the pods. Definitely need to get them done.
So just a question, because I don't know, I don't know nothing about HVAC, but what if on the bid, the base bid was for four? You had an alternate for all of them and then you had a third.
That's true.
Just purchasing them and setting them on top of the building.
That's what I'm saying is, I think it's a, a lot of more discussion than just a five or 10-minute discussion today unless you're wanting to sit here and go through it all. I'm going to go get my notes if we did it because I had, we had some different ideas too. They were good ideas and I'm not saying the one that I am choosing is the best, it's just, that's the one I prefer.
Not to, not to just push this thing off, but what about if you came back to the, to the commission with a proposal in a week? Preferred option one, preferred option two, preferred option three.
Get with me, but before the game Thursday, I'm not going to be in a good mood. And I'm willing to, I think we need to have it more laid out as option, either have maybe have three options on there to choose from or two, whatever the number is. I don't know if you had a preferred method when you sat there. Jay, were you in there? Maybe it was, we, we had a lot of, Wayne was in there.
Wherever.
We and Brian.
And there's a thousand different ways to do it, but I thought we kind of had it narrowed down to probably three that we could get together if we wanted to do that, then.
The only thing that we need to find out, if we bid them all out and we store, say, five of them, what will happen to the warranty? Can we extend the warranty out or is that from the time it's dropped off or is it from the time that it started up?
So we did talk about that and I know that at one point on appliances, if you buy appliances for your new home, you buy them before you move into your new home. And if you can document when it's actually been to, that's where your warranty starts. And I don't know if these are anything like that, so did you, were you able to find anything out about that?
I've got a meeting hopefully next week. The RFP is supposed to be in town, so I can talk to him about it.
And that is an issue that we ran into with the jail, the stuff we put in there, sat there for a year before we even got moved in and so we lost a year on the warranty stuff on it, so.
Well, and we talked about the crane too. If we don't put them all up there, we'll have to bring the crane back multiple times too, about something else that we discussed.
What's the timeframe from when we place an order and when we receive one?
Right now, well, I'll ask you right next week when it's in. Last I heard, probably 12 to 14 weeks or once the order gets placed.
We can take some of them, if we take the ones, if we do all the pods first too, we can put them in a graveyard somewhere. We can use parts off of those, so we can. We can take some of them, if we take the ones, if we do all the pods first too. We can put them in a graveyard somewhere. We can use parts off of those. So we can limp along with some of this other stuff. I mean, the pods are probably the most important ones. We don't want them just to fail and have to have all the prisoners staying at John's house for the night, so.
Don't let my rules.
Different there probably some.
My cats.
I think there's a, I don't think we have everything answered necessarily for today either. If y'all got any other questions.
No, I guess it just, you make some assumptions. One of the overall assumptions is we, the ones that sit up there today and operate have limited lives remaining. We don't know which one's going to go out first or second or third.
Right.
The idea of almost mothballing, well, that's not even the right term. Storing units up there in the interim, maybe, as long as they don't, their warranty doesn't expire before we plug them in and turn them on. And then the idea that as one fails and it's replaced and the old one is removed, it becomes the parts department for the other ones that may just have a minor fix and not a complete replacement. And I, you hope to at some point have these things. It's almost the way Chief Hoy cycles the ambulances. When it gets to fourteen total, they're going to be staggered in age and condition. And when they do fail or must be refurbished, there'll be a process to do that. And you won't come in here once and say, I need fourteen new ambulances next year. Right now, we're danger of you coming and saying, I need, is it ten?
Nine units.
Nine. Now, right?
That's the worst case scenario.
That's the worst case, yes. I feel if we can do the pods and this, next year and then maybe the year after, see what the other units, what the other five look like, that would make a decision.
So next week then?
Yeah, if we can just table it to next week.
We're pushing this on to the Eastern District Commissioner here, but we're handicapped of two of us sitting down and having this discussion with Greg, because we'll, we need to invite the world and publish it, right? Because it's a quorum.
And there was a lot more that was, I mean, we were here for a good hour. I mean, there's a lot of good conversation, a lot of questions answered. And that's, that's the unfortunate part of that is that y'all didn't hear that. And it may have made it perfectly clear for you and be ready to say, well, this is what I want to do today. I think, you know, Sam, time is of the essence. I agree. We want to get something going on and quit kicking it down the road, but...
I just replaced a four ton furnace in one of my, in the building. And of course, again, we got, you can't get parts for it anymore, so I found some used parts. We brought those in. They didn't work, so we ended up putting a whole new four ton furnace in. So it's, I just don't want, I don't want to have to be farming out our inmates because we think we're spending a lot now.
Eric, well, I guess like I said, the rep's supposed to be in next week, so I'll have some answers. Probably won't be Monday. I'm sending you not going to be here Monday too, because I have...
Okay, so let me know that. I mean, email them and say, we talked about it today. We've got a meeting next Tuesday. We want to know the warranty part, when that will start. You know, I mean, if we can get the units now rather than waiting two or three down, two or three years down the road, if we can get that much out of these other ones, saves us that much more money and it keeps the, you know, the cost of it's not going to go down.
No.
So.
I will send him an email after I move here.
So it's looking like next week's agenda will address this.
Yeah, I'll try to have myself form. I didn't, I didn't bring my final in. I have some other ideas on it too, so.
Okay.
See you.
Okay. Approval for soft match credit from Boone County.
This is an engineer.
One first. So prepare to be amazed, yeah.
Watched you play basketball. This should be interesting.
He's saving you some money.
He is, yes.
So federal regulations originating in section one twenty-three, subsection E of the nineteen eighty-seven Surface Transportation and Uniform Relocation Assistance Act provides that agencies may receive soft match credit for cost of locally funded bridge replacement or rehabilitation. Basically what it is, is if we do a bridge in-house that's on MoDOT's poor list, we will receive soft match credit for that. Currently, Boone County has a surplus of soft match and they are willing to sell it at for sixty-five cents on the dollar. And I would like permission to purchase fifty thousand dollars of credit at a cost of thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars from Boone County. And this credit will be used for the stirbridge, bridge replacement project that we have coming up next year.
And that's our matching portion or cover.
Correct. Instead of us paying the full fifty thousand, we would only pay the thirty-two five. Gets fifty thousand in credit and then it would save us seventeen.
You just read the last line on your presentation. By doing this, the county will save seventeen thousand five hundred dollars on total cost of the bridge.
Well, my last line says attached is a letter to be signed and sent to Boone County for their signatures.
Can I add something?
Two, sure.
So that when we're doing Tanner Bridge, that just bid, we're going to, we're here in a couple of weeks. We have soft match that we built up when we built the Friendship Roadbox culvert, okay? So that's our match money to put towards that grant, because that, we've lost everything that we have. So when we do this next project, which will be stirbridge. We were at a soft match, but if we can do this, we can basically save seventeen five.
So they're basically going to lose their soft match?
They can't spend it.
They can't spend it.
They don't need it. And so they're just going to sell it and they're going to take that money and go spend it on others.
That's what I was trying to figure out. I was like, wouldn't they use it on something? But I see now.
Back in the day, so back in the day with the old formula that MoDOT used, they gave you so much money every year and you built up funds. A lot of these small, lower class counties could not, they didn't have the match money. But they had all kinds of BRO money. They would sell the BRO or trade it for soft match so they could match a project. We could build up all kinds of soft match or we could do the match if we wanted to. And so we would trade in those cases. The trading is a little different now because you're not building up BRO funds every year. You actually submit a project and get awarded. So it's a little different, but I think it's a great opportunity. We're saving seventy-five because we're going to spend the match either way. It's just going to cost us less.
Seat wheels spinning over there.
Thanks, Sust. I'm just, I'm just thinking of how the auditor's going to book this.
I talked to him. He approved it.
He did? Well, he was foolish if we don't take advantage of the situation. We know we can improve the operation by seven, you know, basically make that, preempt that money. I don't know why we wouldn't do it. There's no risk involved. We know we got stirbridge coming. We know we can, we need soft match. Here's where we can buy it. It's on sale. It's on sale for us.
Well, we don't necessarily need the soft match. It just allows us to extend our dollar a little further on the local match side of things, so.
It's a Black Friday special.
Let's go with it. Black Wednesday.
So...
I just have a letter here for y'all to sign. And then once everybody signs this, I will send it to Boone County for their commissioners to sign. And then they will get it to MoDOT for the transfer.
I will make a motion that the commission members here in Coal County sign in agreement with Boone County to direct MoD to transfer fifty thousand of our soft match credits, but not ours, of Boone County's soft match credits to Coal County at a cost of seven, no, I'm sorry.
Thirty-two five.
Thirty-two five.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Okay, signing of surplus title for public works.
We actually have three surplus titles that we need to sign on the public works. I believe they'll all be sold on Purple Wave.
This year. All right, I'll make a motion to sign the surplus titles for public works for two thousand and six, for two thousand and seven international and two thousand and nine international.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Discussion on upgrading Coal County Building and Electrical Codes.
So this is an item that has become a little more in front of us now that we hired Michael Rankin to take the position of building inspector. So Mark Lubrin retired back in two thousand and twenty-one, worked part-time for four years, decided to finally hang it up, which opened up that position. And we were thankful to, that Michael was interested. We hired him four weeks ago. Give or take three, three, so.
Well, it's not official till we have your cell number.
We don't give those out just anybody yet.
Sorry, I was trying to break him in, right?
Yeah, well, so, so anyway, one of the first things that we tasked Michael with doing with our game team is to start looking at the process and what's needed to update our codes. So we've been operating off of the two thousand building code and the two thousand and two electric code. And we understand it's time to update. There's been, there was a few chances to update going past, you know, past several years, different opportunities, maybe doing it when the city was or whatnot. And at that time, we chose not to do that for whatever reason. Doesn't matter at this point. But we do need to update. The plan of action would be to update to the two thousand and eighteen code. There's several codes, not just there's a building, but then there's a bunch under the international building code. The electric code would actually be the two thousand and seventeen. And then there's also residential energy code. That would, two thousand and nine is where the city's at on that. So we feel it's important that we, we get close to where the city is. Now, we would have our own amendments. They have theirs, things that apply to them. You know, out in the county, it's a little bit different in some cases. And so we would, we would add our own amendments to that. So doing a little research about it, we found that there are state statutes that, that govern how, how you go about doing this or how a county would have to go about doing this. So the first item of business is the county commission would have to appoint a building commission. And there was actually one appointed back in late nineties or so to address the actual adoption of building codes to begin with. Now, that commission, as I understand it, would stay in effect, you know, however long we needed to. Maybe you would always have a building commission. Probably the best thing to do that is to have one. Not that it needs to be used or anything all the time, but typically in the case of the city, they have different building committees or commissions for different parts of the code. In our case, it would just be one. So it requires, I believe, five people, five citizens of the county to be on the commission and one county commissioner.
Four citizens and one commissioner, I think. Is it four and one?
Four and one.
Four and one.
It's a two-year term. And the commissioner that is on the board goes until they return and the commission is up.
So that would be the first thing. We've already started coming up with a list and talked to a few people to see if they'd be interested. And so our goal would be with this commission, we would have two to three meetings, just present, here's, here's where we're at. Here's a proposed draft of what this would look like to update to the current codes. Once, once that draft code is, is good with the commission, we would have a public meeting just to invite contractors, anybody interested in then hearing where we're at to give us some input. And then there's also a statute requirement that there'd be three public hearings. So just looking at some target dates of where we might want to end up. It really kind of depends on when that building commission's formed and how, how soon we have our first meeting. But I think our goal would be to have something done within the first quarter of next year. We don't think getting to the two thousand and eighteen building code, two thousand and seventeen electric code will be too complicated. One thing we found is that just in a couple of the plans that some of the recent permits are operating or some of the buildings were done or the buildings were designed to, I think, two thousand and eighteen on one and two thousand and twenty-one, just a couple that we looked at. So contractors are already building to these standards when they're, when they're doing these homes. Most of them, not everything, but most of them. So getting to that point, I think shouldn't be too, too difficult. Contractors that are working in both the city and county, they're already working for a certain code in the city and understand those requirements, so don't think it'd be too difficult. You know, maybe getting, you know, some contractors to understand, you know, what the update is and what's required and what different types of inspections are required. Maybe a little bit of a learning curve, but don't think this process will be too difficult. When we go to the next iteration, I know the city's looking at going to the two thousand and twenty-three, maybe starting that process here next year. That would require a whole new set of amendments and everything, a lot, lot more lengthy process to do that. But in the case of going to the eighteen, since we're kind of mimicking a little bit of what the city's doing, don't think it should be too challenging. But that's just a general, general update on where we're at and where we would like to go. And just want to know if there's any, any comments, suggestions, thoughts before we go down this path.
This would apply after enactment, would apply to buildings being built outside of the city of Jefferson but in the county of Coal.
Correct.
Correct. Is there any other city or village in Coal that has any, any codes that...
No, we do inspections in all the seven communities.
Okay.
None of them that I've found, do we have an agreement to do that? We just do it by handshake agreement? That is something that we need to do is have an actual agreement in place where they actually would adopt our code in their city charter or whatever it is. So that, that's a process that will have to take place too.
I've written up an agreement. So we have one that is, Eric.
Okay. The, either, I guess the individuals who would serve on this commission, they're generally builders?
I would think so, yeah. I know the couple that we've talked to are, are, they're building contractors, whether they're builders or electric or plumbing or whatever.
This would not impact their ability to do business with the county? If the county were to build a building or, and they bid on whether to, you know, perform the service? Doesn't, doesn't give them a conflict or anything?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't think so.
And some of them would maybe jump at the opportunity of serving on the commission? The other ones would go there screaming and, or not?
At least the one that I talked to agrees that we do need to update our codes and thinks it's a good thing. Just, most contractors are doing it to whatever current code it is.
I mean, they're living with that code inside the city of Jefferson.
Right, right. So the disciplines are doing it anyway, for the most part. It's just a matter of just getting up to date. We really haven't changed our process or the whole, you know, building inspection arena really since we started doing this in the late nineties. So it's just one of those things that, you know, when you have a changeover personnel, sometimes that's a good opportunity to look at, look at what you're doing and update when you need to.
What should we do today to, to move this forward?
I don't think we need an actual action from the county commission today. We just wanted to let you know where we're at and what the process, we believe, is going forward. Kind of just our general timeline. And just wanted to make you aware of what the statute, how that reads and what's required of us to go through this process. So, and just want to hear if you had any feedback or comments or thoughts or whatever going forward.
So we already have a building electrical code, right? So why do we have to have this commission that's going to bring us a code? If we're looking to update it, we're not making a new code. We're not submitting a code. We're just going to go in there and make a change to it.
We, the commission doesn't do the code. All they are is an advisory, is an...
I understand, but I, why do we have to have, why do we got to comply with sixty-four one eighty when we already have a building? a building electrical code? We can go in there and change it anytime we want to. We don't have to get this five-person commission together to make a recommendation. Is the way I'm seeing it. I, I think we should be able to make the changes. I'm okay with getting a, a building commission together to bring us the ideas. I don't think it's a bad idea at all. I don't, and if somebody else wants to serve one and we have seven people or whatever, because the books are stupid thick. They're not made for us. They're made for the United States to cover big cities and different things. So uh, the good thing is we're going to try to adopt what Charleston City has adopted. They've been through the growing pains and stuff. You mentioned builders. There's a lot of them that don't want to deal with the stuff in the city. They don't, they stay outside. How many building permits have been, um, like residential in Jeff City in probably the last three years, maybe 10? There's not that much building inside state limits right now.
There's not many developments and yes, there's not much residential. It's mostly.
That's about the change.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, a lot of us going to be like one builder here and two or three over there, but.
Well, if we're still using codes from 2000, I'd say, you know, it's 25 years. It's probably time that we, we, uh, update our.
I'm fine with that, but there's a lot of them that are overreaching and just make no sense. I mean, are you going to want them to make you put sprinklers in your house?
Yeah, no, things like that, we would accept outdo the amounts.
There's things we just kind of go through and go through the proper exercises, obviously have the HBA involved and, uh, probably pull the realtors, throw them in there. Have, because a lot of them are builders too, and they've run into some of these things and they can tell us what we need to watch for. I think it's a great idea. So, but I just didn't know we had to, we've already got a code, so.
Jeff, your question is, do we, do we really have to in a form of building commission? Because we already have a code. All we're doing is updating it. That's the question. Does the commission, anytime we. The reason we do is because you can amend and update the current codes that you're on. But what we are doing is adopting a new code cycle now. So it's technically an adoption, not an amendment, because it only, the amendments only apply to the 2000 code. So we can't amend the 2000 code to add sections of the newer code in that. We just have to adopt the new code cycle, which is 2018. So that's why we would have to do it so, and comply with that statute.
Okay.
Because it falls under adoption rather than. That's the way we're reading it, um, that because we're bringing on a new one, adopting a new one, we have to go through the process. But if we didn't have to do that, that would be great. But I, I, I believe that we do just based on the way the statute reads, so.
No, I mean, that makes sense. Of adopting a new one and not just amending the old ones.
Correct, yeah. And that's what we're doing.
I was just trying to have to stay away from having to, we could do it however we wanted to. If we wanted six, seven, 10.
Well, it can be more if we want, yeah.
But, I mean, sometimes it's not more than others.
Okay.
And I, and Jeff, to your point, uh, inviting the HBA and the Board of Realtors, people that are in the business that are dealing with us every day, I think is very good and important because as we go to this, I mean, you guys are going to have to make that, you know, decision to do that and knowing that, um, it's not just us bringing it to you. It's the community through the people that are actually dealing with it on a daily basis. I think it's important.
You said three public hearings?
That's the way it reads. Three public hearings, uh, 15 days apart or something like that. We just have to give a 15-day notice of a public hearing. We're not entirely sure on the verbiage if it requires uh, subsequent 15 days between each hearing. Or if you can just schedule three dates and as long as everybody knows 15 days in advance that here's my three dates. I don't believe they need to be 15 days apart. And possibly one of those public hearings can be that public meeting that we're going to invite people to, basically just a open forum type meeting. So that could be one of them. So.
I'm all in favor. I mean, I've, I've noticed looking back or just looking in what code are we living in here? And when it's the early 2000s, it's seems like, wait a minute. We, we're doing update and, uh, but even though you updated or adopt a new one, there are there are abilities to amend it to fit your specific situations. Or no, we don't want to do that, but we do want to do.
No sidewalks when nobody else has sidewalks. There's still others.
That would actually be, I mean, that's, and that's part of what we're looking at too, is updating the building or the subdivision regulations, that whole document. And that's outdated as well. And if, if everything goes like we planned, we would have one large document with different chapters. Um, and that, you know, that would be, that would be, you know, published and online and where contractors, developers and all that can rarely find the information they need. And it just allows better communication amongst everybody, we feel. But like I said, we just want to have a discussion, let you know where we're at, get feedback and, uh, as soon as we have a, uh, committee or commission, a possible list of members, we'll bring them to you.
Really throw them into it right away, aren't you? So, because we've been talking about this for a while. So.
I mean, now's the time really, because Michael, where he was at out in Colorado, um, you were under the 2018 code. So he's well-versed and been doing that for a long time. So it's, yeah.
Well, the good news is when we have a public hearing, all three of us could show up, uh, because it's been posted.
Exactly. Okay. Well, thank you. That was sort of the only question I had, because I thought.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Okay. Approval and sign of SFY 2025 GEMT cost repair report.
Good morning again. So our consultants have prepared the 2025 GEMT cost report. Remember that this is a cost sharing reimbursement from, uh, CMS back to, uh, individual EMS agencies to help offset, uh, the cost of operations. Um, I did send you a copy of the full report, but just the highlights, um, in, for, for 2025, we will be receiving, uh, $427,632. Of that, we will have to pay the non-federal share of $147,668, which makes our total net share $279,964. This is substantially larger than previous years. Um, some of the highlights, without getting too far into this, um, we had about a $900,000 increase in our operating costs last year. While, uh, we ran more calls and had significantly less reimbursement, um, from CMS. So that is the reason for that number. Um, one thing that I will get with the auditor about is that non-federal share is higher than what we currently have in the 25 budget. So we'll need to adjust that, but then we'll also adjust the revenue side as well to reflect it. So today I just need, um, approval and signing of the, uh, general information certificate and then the, um, administration fee agreement between us and MoHealthNet. Time is of the essence. I do need to get both of these submitted by the end of the day. So if Don could assist with that, that would be great. Happy to answer your questions.
We, we're calling this the 2025 adjustment or with a 2025. Do, does it operate on a different year?
Yeah, it's a fiscal year. Um, so I believe it is, um, July 1, 2024 through June 30th, 2025.
Who is this CMS is who we're getting the reimbursement from?
Uh, it's, uh, MoHealthNet, um, which is, uh, Medicaid, uh, for the state of Missouri, but also there is federal pass-through dollars. Um, this is not necessarily a program that I am super familiar with. It was started before my arrival. And thankfully we have some very capable consultants who run all of this for us.
Are these the numbers that later get audited?
Yes. However, uh, there's been a change in procedure and those numbers are audited before payments are issued now. Um, so there is less likely to be a downstream effect. If you recall several years ago, uh, you know, one of the first years of this issue, we, we had a very large payout and we ended up having to owe some substantial money back. That was with a consultant firm that we do not use anymore. The firm that we have been using has been very conservative and has a track record of, um, underestimating our reimbursement. So we've been getting additional payments. Um, and they are also the ones who assisted us with rectifying the previous matter as well.
I remember a panic phone call from you.
Yes.
To me after hours on a Friday, I think.
Yes.
Saying, oh my goodness, look what we have here. And that was the, the modification and the, that we just spoke of.
Correct, yes.
You said the payment is actually down this year.
So, so our payment is actually substantially more, uh, because the reimbursement that we've received throughout the year from CMS is down.
Okay, so we had increased volume and we got the payment they were estimating and so, okay, I get it.
Basically our operating costs were substantially more than what our revenue was this year.
Yeah, more calls than they estimated, so they're going to owe us a little more. Are those, uh, emergency calls and transfers and everything?
Yeah, they are emergency calls for service, yes. So 911 calls for service. A lot of things go into this, uh, you know, obviously, um, CMS reimbursement.
It'd be a transfer then.
What's that?
It's not a transfer, right?
It, it, this is not.
Transfers are 911.
This does not include transfers.
We got farther down in the weeds than that, didn't it?
Yeah, I'm going to stop you right there.
Thank you. That'd be great.
I want to make a motion to approve and sign the S, uh, SFY 2025 GEMT cost report.
Second. And the other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Saw all those spreadsheets. I thought, Harry's going to have fun with these.
Yeah. It doesn't have pennies on it, does it? They do not.
No, they're not.
Okay.
Oh wait, there's one line with the average cost per transport.
Do we have anything else before we go into closed session? I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following. Personnel issues under section 610.021 subsection 3. Security under section 610.021 subsection 20.
Second. Roll call, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Yes. Eric.